Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you.
And did you catch Councilmember Sandberg?
I read it and saw her, so...
There you go. We'll begin tonight with our land and labor acknowledgement for the city of Bloomington. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to work, to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. We'll now move into agenda summation. We'll begin this evening with the approval of minutes. We have a set from May 4, 2022, regular session, and from the February 23, 2023, State of the City. We'll then move into reports. Included there are council member reports. I'm not aware of any from the mayor and city offices at this point. Reports from council committees. We'll then move into our first of two periods of public comment for items not on the agenda. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Under that heading, we have Resolution 23-07 to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, regarding a joint Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission. We also have Ordinance 2309 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding the creation of a joint city-county Human Rights Commission. We then have Ordinance 23-08 to amend the Traffic Calming and Greenways Program incorporated by reference into Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amending the Traffic Calming and Greenways Program incorporated by reference into Bloomington Municipal Code Section 15 Point 26 Point 020. We'll then move into legislation for first readings. Included there is Ordinance 23-10 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03 and 20.04. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So with that, let's continue with our approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes for May 4, 2022, regular session, and February 23, 2023, State of the City.
Second.
And just by way of information for the public, we'll be, we have a council member on Zoom this evening, so we'll be taking, all votes will be roll call votes. So with that, I will ask Madam Clerk to please call, if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes 9-0. Thank you, everyone. With that, we will come to reports for the evening. We'll start with council member reports. I'll start on my far left. Councilmember Volin.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who voted in yesterday's primary elections. It's important, especially in this community, to vote, and I want to thank everyone who who ran for office. It's important to stand for elective office and to stand for frankly, anything. I don't want to get into cliches all of a sudden if you don't stand for something. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
No report, except to echo Councilmember Volin's sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report. Thanks.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will just add an extended invitation to my May constituent meeting coming up this Saturday, May 6, at 1:30 p.m. We'll conduct that via Zoom, and the link is available at souforcitycouncil.com. There's a join button. All you have to do is click on that. So, thank you, everyone. I'm not aware of any reports from the mayor and city offices. Are there any reports from council committee? Seeing none, let's go to our first period of public comment for items not on our legislative agenda this evening. How many in chambers do we have? One, two, okay. Mr. Lucas, go ahead and approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please let us know now by using the raise hand button in your control bar. You can find that under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way.
Great. Thank you. Let's start here in chambers. Welcome. You'll have five minutes. If you, and please sign in. I always forget to remind people. Please sign in.
Thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. I still want to talk about this Cascades Path kind of thing. You've got to understand how useless it is for transportation. It's got three endpoints. That's where you start with connectivity analysis, the ends of it.
To the north.
It does connect to the dog park. It does connect to something, the dog park. But it stops just short of the Griffey Trails. If you want to go from the Cascades Path to the Griffey Trails, which I do, by the way, want to do that, you have to, you have to ford the creek. The Griffey spillway has a creek, and you have to cross it. And there's a bunch of options for crossing it, and they're all weather-dependent, kind of fallen trees-dependent. It's, it's, it's not connected to that, to that property that's a park's property. To the west, it does run along Clubhouse Drive. It goes up that hill, and it comes out onto Kinzer Pike, just south of the golf course. It doesn't connect to any sidewalks up there. There's a sidewalk on the other side of Kinzer Pike, and if you want to cross Kinzer Pike without any sort of assistance, you can. And there's no bike facility on Kinzer Pike, full stop, none. The south, oh, God, the south. So it does connect. There is one other destination, two destinations on the entire path system. It does connect to the playground at Lower Cascades. It really does connect to that playground. That's it. That is it. It doesn't go south of there. So if you want to get all the way to the southern edge of Park's property, you have to walk in the street, which, you know, now that there's speed humps, it's still a miserable experience to walk. It's much better to bike than it was, but it is not a place you're going to want to walk with your kids, especially if they're, you know, if you want them to have fun, if you want them to run across the street and look at the different sides and look at the caves and look at the, you're going to get your kids run over doing that. This is what happens when we let Parks and Rec bureaucrats design transportation facilities. We spent millions of dollars on this, and it doesn't connect to anything except two parks facilities. It's supposed to connect to three. It doesn't even connect to the third park's facility. It doesn't connect to any housing. It doesn't connect to any schools. It doesn't connect to any businesses. It doesn't connect to any shopping, any restaurants. It doesn't connect to a single thing except two parks properties. It is useless for transportation. It has no value whatsoever for transportation because it doesn't connect to anything, and that's why I talk about connected networks. And that's why it's important to listen to our planners. They will always tell you, if you're willing to listen, that connected networks start near the middle. You have to connect your new facility to at least one old facility, or your new facility is going to be useless for transportation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Lucas, do we have any requests on Zoom?
Just one moment. Jim Shelton?
Okay. Let's do here in chambers first, and then we'll go to Mr. Shelton, if that's okay.
All right. Good evening, Council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I thank you for the time tonight. I want to echo Councilmember Volin's remarks about those who voted yesterday. I know it was seemingly a record amount. It still was only 8,000 and some change in a community of 80,000. While I commend those who voted, we still need to get that up. But I also want to thank everybody who ran for us. It is office. It is a tough racket. Congratulations to those who who won, but I, you know, I made several calls before the primary to try to get people to run, and, and they, you know, laughed at me on a couple occasions. It's a lot of work, the questionnaires, the forums, the door-to-door. I admire that, and we had a lot of great candidates who are community-minded, and that is a blessing here in Bloomington. The second item I'm going to bring up is the Committee on the Council Process, which meets tomorrow. I will not make it, but I want to give my public comment tonight. Item A on that agenda is the Boarding Commission's Reform, and I've talked to Councilmember Flaherty about this, but that was the NOVAC report that the mayor's office instituted, and I think there was a process involved that didn't have the council's input, but I think this is, this particular committee is a chance to do that, where we really maximize utility on boards and commissions. I think they're important tools for government here, but they can't just be a means to an end themselves. They have to be useful for the council, the mayor's office, to make decisions, and useful for those who are in there. We want to do everything we can to make that as best we can. So I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, let's go to Mr. Shelton, please.
Yes, Mr. Shelton should be able to unmute now.
Mr. Shelton, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Jim Shelton, also with the chamber, here to follow my boss, but I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Court of Point and Special Advocates of CASAs. I want to make sure the public is aware that the CASA Spring Training is coming up in just a few weeks. It will start the 22nd of May and runs through June 14th. It'll be on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30. We really need people to get involved and to serve as volunteers for these children who are in the court system, not for anything they've done, but for what their parents have either done or actually mostly lately have not done. So you can get this training. It'll be about 33 hours, and then you would be sworn in by Judge Harvey and become a CASA, an agent of the court, if you will, and your job would be another set of eyes and ears to help the court know what is going on with the children and with their parents and with service providers, et cetera, so the best possible decision, decisions can be made to help these children get into a permanent good situation going forward. So you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, and you'll learn a bunch of details if you need those to decide, and then you can actually fill out the application to be a CASA on the website and submit it. So I invite people to think about that. Application will be due here in the next 10 days or so, and we really need people. We've got like 30 children right now who we do not have a volunteer to assign for their case. So thank you for the opportunity to use this forum to let people know.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, or here in chambers? Seeing none, that'll conclude our first of two periods of public comment, and will take us to appointments to boards and commissions. Is there, are there any recommendations from Interview Team A? Seeing none, Team B? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. On behalf of Interview Team B, I would like to move appointment of Patty Moon to Seat C3 of the Community Advisory and Public Safety Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
That passes 9-0. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, please go on.
Yes, additional recommendations. Again, on behalf of Interview Team B, I'd like to recommend, or I'd like to move the appointment of Shannon Geick to Seat C4 and Mitchell Owens to Seat C10 of the Environmental Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on that recommendation?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And that two passes 9-0. Thank you, and thank you to those who will be serving on boards and commissions. And are there any recommendations for appointment from Interview Team C? No, seeing none. All right, that takes us to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2307 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That passes 9-0. Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2307 to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, regarding a joint Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution approves an interlocal agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County pursuant to state law to establish and fund a joint Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission. The agreement provides that the city of Bloomington shall be responsible for staffing the commission, which together with staff shall engage in human rights education and awareness activities and enforce both city and county human rights ordinances. In exchange, the county shall make semi-annual payments to the city controller to share the cost of these activities. Once approved, together with corresponding changes to the city and county human rights ordinances, the seven-member Joint Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission will be made up of three mayor appointments, two common council appointments, and two appointments by the Monroe County Commissioners.
That's all. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2307 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I, Ms. Kate, welcome.
Thank you, and we, Councilmembers. Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel for the city of Bloomington. When we came before council earlier this year to amend the Bloomington Municipal Code and shift the Human Rights Commission from the legal department to the Community and Family Resources Department, we indicated then that we were in negotiations with the county to create a merged city-county Human Rights Commission to better serve residents and to expand opportunities for public outreach and education, and that we would come back here once those negotiations were concluded. They are concluded, and we're back. So I will be summarizing the resolution and the ordinance, I'll be back to do that as well, that are before you tonight, that are designed to create and empower and fund a new Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission. Director Callender Anderson of CFRD and Assistant City Attorney Audrey Birdingham are here as well. Audrey staffs the Bloomington Human Rights Commission and will staff the joint commission from our office going forward, and we're all able to answer your questions that you may have. I also just want to give a shout out to Barbara McKinney, who's here in spirit. She launched us on this path last year before she left and worked diligently to bring us to this point. And I also want to give a shout out to Jeff Cockrell over at the county and to our friends in county government who have been working on this as well. In fact, I got word from Jeff that the county commissioners approved the interlocal and corresponding changes to their code, excuse me, to their code today, earlier today. So as Clerk Bolden read, Resolution 2307, it's the first item for your consideration tonight on this effort. It approves an interlocal agreement between the city and the county whereby effectively the city will staff the joint commission with the Human Rights Director and Human Rights Administrative Assistant plus legal support from Audrey, as I mentioned, from an Assistant City Attorney. The joint commission with staff support will investigate and resolve discrimination complaints under both city and county codes, which are substantially the same. There are a few differences, but whichever code applies to a given complaint will be used, and the joint commission with staff support will conduct the public outreach and education efforts. Staff under this agreement will provide an annual report to the commissioners in February of each year, starting in 2024, on the work of the joint commission, and the county will pay half of the salary and benefits of the Human Rights Director and the Human Rights Administrative Assistant, adjusted for the percentage of their time that is dedicated to human rights function. So if that position is split with other duties, then the county is only paying for the half of the human rights function, and that's the formula that you see in the interlocal. The initial term of this agreement is three years. We really don't know what the caseload of a joint commission is going to look like. We know what the caseloads of the respective city and county commissions look like right now, but we don't know what may happen, particularly with perhaps increased cases coming out of the county with increased educational efforts and things like that. That's some of the speculation that our county counterparts have been engaging in. So we made the initial term three years in order to give us some time to accrue some experience and then go ahead and evaluate that experience, and thereafter, the interlocal can be renewed for five-year periods, and we can make whatever adjustments we need at that point. As I mentioned, the county commissioners have already approved the interlocal. Actually, the county council had already appropriated the $35,000 payment that you see reflected in here. That's effectively the amount for what will be a prorated eight months' worth of joint commission function under the formula that you see. So that payment will be made to the city this year and then going forward. It's as you see in the formula in the agreement. The interlocal references making necessary code changes to reflect the combined Human Rights Commission, that's the next item on your agenda after this one, and I'll be back to discuss that and those changes, but in the meantime, happy to answer any questions on the resolution and the interlocal. And I think you got today some revised interlocal that reflects what were some changes the county had negotiated with us and we had put in there but didn't make it to you earlier. So, so that reflects just a clarification of what the actual dollar payments would be going forward. The county wanted those spelled out, and what happens if we don't give them notice of what the salary will be in the next year going forward.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kate. Just on that point about number four in the interlocal agreement, and I'll have some other questions later, but on that particular point that was slightly revised, I don't understand why, if the initial three-year term, the portion is thirty, is 70%, oh, half the portion, okay. All right. No, I'm just answering my own question here because 70% plus 35% was 105%, and that was very confusing to me, but you're saying it's half of the 70%.
It's half of the 70%, because the 70% reflects the portion of the director's time which is spent on these functions.
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
I'll have another question in a minute.
No worries.
Additional questions? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a couple other questions, if I may, and let me find them in my document here. So, well, actually, I think they're all on the, I think my questions are actually all about the ordinance rather than the resolution. Let me check just a moment. Yes, sorry. They're all upon the ordinance. They will come up next. Thank you.
No problem. I'll be back.
Additional questions on Resolution 2307? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment. Is there public comment? And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, happily. If there are members of the public that would like to comment on this resolution, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You'll find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also let us know you'd like to speak by sending us a chat.
Okay, thanks, and let's begin here in chambers.
Good evening again, Council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and we are in full support of this agreement with the county. I think this is a great example of collaboration that we have really been pushing for. Some of you attended our Better Together luncheon. This is the type of area that I think can be, can create a public that is less cynical about government. There's a lot of work and a lot of collaboration to come with the county. We have a new justice center that needs to be built. We have a convention center expansion that still is sort of lost and limbo, but here we have at least an area where they came together, my compliments to Council Kate and Jeff Cockrell for putting this together, and if you notice, the county only has two, two members on this seven-member council, so it's, it probably was some give and take, and I spoke earlier today to the commissioners. This is, you know, this may not be perfect, but you can't throw out perfect for good. So this is, this is good and a good process moving forward, and I've seen some of the awkwardness in, in the county-city collaborations at NPO meetings, and I think we are at a point where we can turn the page on that collaboration, where we have a collective and a not adversarial relationship. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I believe so.
Okay, and anyone else here in chambers? Okay, seeing none, let's come back to council. Are there any additional questions on Resolution 2307? Seeing none, is there any final comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I would just say I agree with Mr. MG. I think this is a great opportunity for collaboration and especially given the duplication now and our human rights ordinances being very, very similar. I think county government and city government agree on the principles behind this and want to prevent discrimination in our community and, and broaden the education on these topics, so I think this is a good move, and I appreciate those who worked on it.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2307 passes 9-0. Much appreciated. That takes us to Ordinance 23-09.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2309 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger? Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes. Okay, and that passes nine-zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2309 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding the creation of a joint city-county Human Rights Commission. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approves of changes to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Bloomington Municipal Code in order to create and empower a joint Bloomington-Monroe County Human Rights Commission, which will place the city and county individual rights commissions.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2309 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Kate.
Thank you. Beth Kate Corporation Counsel, I am back. So ordinance 2309 amends the code to reflect the creation of this joint Human Rights Commission. The changes to the code are minimal since the substance of the work of the commission will not be changing. Really, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith rightly noted, the county and the city share the principles underlying the human rights ordinances. They're substantially similar ordinances. There are a few differences. But the joint commission would be tasked with applying the relevant code provisions of either the city or the county code, depending on the nature of the matter before it. And really, other than that, and to note that there was, I think, one amendment that has been proposed to what you saw, I just want to call that out. So this commission is a seven-member commission. That's what the city and the county each had going into this joint effort, and we did discuss that. And as the chamber noted, it remains a seven-member commission. That's with agreement by the city and the county, but spreading the appointments across the mayor and the common council and the county commissioners. So the mayor and the common council used to have four and three. Now they have three and two, and the remaining two are with the county commissioners. As we were going through and thinking about the terms today, we realized that actually a provision of the Bloomington Municipal Code 2.080202 requires that for new commissions that are created after 2014, December 2014, the enabling legislation has to provide for a staggering of their terms. And that was not covered in what we had originally provided to you as the code changes. And so this amendment reflects a change, not only to specify the two-year term, which would be the default position anyway under the Bloomington Municipal Code, and the county code, but it provides for that staggering explicitly so that we are in compliance with So that's the nature of that amendment. Other than that, I'm just happy to answer questions, and we are happy to answer questions that the members of the council may have.
Shall we dispose of the amendment?
Yeah, why don't we take up the amendment?
I move Amendment One of Ordinance 2309. This was submitted by the administration, and it reads, Appendix One to Ordinance 2309 shall be amended by adding the following sentence to the end of Section 2.23.130. Appointments per Section 2.08.0202 of the code, initial commission terms shall be staggered as follows. One, mayoral appointees shall serve an initial term of one year, and two mayoral appointees shall serve an initial term of two years, and one each of common council and county commissioner appointees shall serve an initial term of one year, and one each shall serve an initial term of two years. Thereafter, all commission terms shall be for two years.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions? Ms. Kate, did you have anything additional on the amendment beyond what you've already shared?
The only thing I'll mention about the amendment is the code provision that we are complying with in offering this amendment also requires that the staggering be spread as evenly as practicable among the appointed authorities. And so that's why you see the complicated one-year, two-year between all of the appointing authorities that you do, because we're trying to make that as even as possible and retain a quorum, obviously, for the second year after one-year appointees are off the commission. Of course, there would be, they'd be replaced by someone else presumably.
Got it. Thank you. Let's come to counsel for questions on the amendment. Seeing none, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on the amendment? And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are folks on Zoom that would like to comment on this amendment, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can find that button under your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab, or you can send a chat to the host.
I'm not seeing any requests to comment here in chambers and nothing on Zoom, so let's come back to counsel for any additional questions or any final comment on the amendment. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment O-one to Ordinance 23-09?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And that amendment passes nine-zero. Thank you. Okay, which brings us back to ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 23-09 as amended. So are there counsel questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Some of my questions are not about the changes. They are about the ordinance itself. I hope that's okay. I think this is a great opportunity for counsel to actually read this part of municipal code and better understand it. So I was looking at the definitions section, and in a couple places, it says that there's an exception in those particular instances where religion, sex, or national origin is a bona fide occupational qualification reasonably necessary to the normal operation of that particular business or enterprise. Can you give an example when, I found it hard to imagine when sex or national origin, I mean, I guess possibly religion if it's work for a religious organization, but I found it hard to understand when that might be a bona fide requirement.
Assistant City Attorney Audrey Birdingham. To be honest, I have not seen that situation arise, and I don't think I've seen anyone claim it thus far. In a similar circumstance, like the religious exception that you pointed out, councilmember, I think there could be circumstances that arise where it might be an important consideration. We haven't seen that happen. Surely, it would be such an incredibly limited circumstance that I can't even, I can't think of one right now either.
Yes, thank you. I'll just add that I think what you're seeing here is longstanding language that tracks language that comes out of federal law. That doesn't mean that it isn't worth revisiting. And as far as when sex or national origin might be bona fide occupational qualification, I'm having a hard time thinking of one right now that would be relevant today for sex in a world in which women are serving in combat roles in the military, for example. I mean, some of the things that historically would have been deemed a sex-based differential qualification. National origin is not the same as citizenship. Sometimes citizenship is actually a requirement for certain types of restricted positions, but that's different from national origin. So I wouldn't think of those in the same immigration-related terms, immigration-law-related terms. So there you have it, old language that continues to exist, I believe, in this way in federal law as well. So I think the codes are pulling from that standard.
Additional questions?
I have others.
Go ahead, please.
So I think I, well, okay, let me ask this one first. So in, let's see, it's page, bottom page 39 of our packet, so it's the powers and duties of the commission, number four. It refers to Bloomington Municipal Code, and I was wondering why it wouldn't have to also refer to Monroe County Code?
I think you're right. I think that it's just an oversight. Thank you for catching that, and we should fix that because I, looking at it, I'm not sure why it shouldn't be in violation of the relevant code, whichever that one is, Bloomington or the Monroe County Code. So, so let me, I don't know how you want to handle that. We can offer an amendment on the fly to that language. And I think the amendment I would offer would be to believe that discrimination in violation of, I don't know if we can just say the relevant code and refer back, or either the Bloomington Municipal Code or the county code, Monroe County Code will work, but...
Mr. Lucas, do you have a recommendation for one approach over the other?
I would suggest simply adding language that says whether probable cause exists to believe that discrimination violation of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Section 2.23.100, and following, and the relevant portion of Monroe County Code. Rather than strike any language, just also add a reference to the relevant portions of Monroe County Code. I'll work on drafting that up here.
Okay, thank you.
Just a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Additional questions while that amendment is coming together?
I have some others. So number, let's see, is this the same section? Yes, in the same section, so the functions of the commission. And maybe this is just a legal term that I don't understand. So number eight, it says to reduce the terms of conciliation agreed to by the parties in writing. Is that reduce in writing, is that some kind of legal term? I don't know what that...
Oh, I think it's just...
To reduce the terms, to me, it was like, why would you want to reduce the terms?
No, no, no. It's reducing it to writing. In other words, to put it in writing.
Okay. I figured it was some kind of legalese. And then there's something that I, I think I sent you an email about earlier today, and that's with, I think it's in the definitions section, with defining a discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. And I was wondering if it references homosexuality, heterosexuality, bisexuality. It does not reference asexuality, and I wonder if that is something, I mean, we don't have to do that tonight, obviously, but if that's something that's ever been considered to be added?
Okay, and I apologize, I have not seen, did you say you sent an email over? Yeah, I have not seen that yet today, so, okay, but...
I will check my out box, but I thought I had sent it.
Okay, no, I'm sure you have, but I have been in Indianapolis at meetings all day, so I have not seen it. But I'll, happy to take a look and see whether that suggests any additional changes to the code. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if that could be considered for an update. It could be separate from this, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Additional questions? Would anyone else like to take a turn? Seeing none, please go ahead.
So then, duties upon finding of discrimination, page 41, number two, you know, the area of housing or acquisition of real property. It made me think of discrimination in the banking and mortgage sector that we've heard of here in Indiana. You know, house, home appraisals and issuing loans to purchase a home. That's an area where discrimination still occurs. Is there anything we can do about that?
Do you mean, other than treating it as something that would be a violation of the code and investigating it if the practice emerges in a complaint?
Well, reading number two here, under duties upon finding of discrimination, it, and maybe, maybe I didn't read the previous paragraphs thoroughly enough, but it sounds like it's just in the area of housing. Like, you're trying to rent a place or you're trying to buy a place. It's not in the area of banking, where you're trying to get a loan in order to buy the house. Or would the banking part be included in this?
Well, I would have to look back at, we have some housing discrimination, there's a separate housing discrimination provision. But in terms of discriminatory housing practices, I think it's, the definition there may be what you want to take a look at. For example, refusing to rent to an individual or family on the basis of familial status, refusing to allow a tenant with a disability to make reasonable accommodations, et cetera. There are various things in there. If you're talking about financial practices, redlining or things like that in particular, if they, let's see, if they're not adequately covered in here, is your question, can we do something in the code to adequately address those? I think that would be something for the, for the council to consider. If, you know, we can sit down and go through this and let you know whether we think anything in here adequately addresses that. If it doesn't, then I think that's an issue that perhaps the council will want to discuss further, and that we would need to take a look at relevant state and federal law to decide whether or not there is any sort of preemptive quality to laws that may address that at another governmental level that would apply here.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate if you could look into that.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Additional questions? Any additional questions from counsel? Mr. Lucas, do we, have we given birth to an amendment yet?
Give me 30 more seconds, and I can display that here on the screen.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Lucas.
So that is Amendment Two to Ordinance 2309. Is there any additional presentation on that, or is that, that's all that's necessary?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I think it was just an oversight that since it's now a joint city-county commission, it needs to refer to county code as well as city code.
Are there questions from counsel on Amendment Two?
Has been introduced in, in seconds.
Oh, I will introduce Amendment Two to Ordinance 2309.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on Amendment Two? Seeing none, let's go to public comment. Is, Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom? And is there anyone in chambers who would like to offer comment on Amendment Two to Ordinance 2309? Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Yes, if there are folks on Zoom that would like to speak to this amendment, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom or sending a chat to the meeting host.
Okay, I'm not seeing any commenters here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing anyone on Zoom?
I am not.
Okay, in which case, let's come back to counsel. Are there any additional questions or comments on Amendment Two to Ordinance 2309? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Two?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And that passes nine-zero. Thank you. So which now takes us to ordinance 2309 as adopted, or excuse me, as amended. Are there any additional questions? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. This is for corporate counsel, I think, or someone, I'm not so sure. But down at the hate crime statistics, and it pretty clearly states here what hate crimes could include. But with regard to collecting that data and issuing reports, are hate crimes defined as, I know it's criminal in nature and has to be criminal, but is that, is a conviction involved? So if you're not convicted of it, then it's not a hate crime. Is that a criteria, a conviction?
My understanding, Councilmember Sims, is that a conviction is not required for the hate crimes report that the city has been producing and that this joint commission will produce to be included in that report. We have incidents that are reported to the commission, and then they are reported in that report, and how they are resolved is reported as well. So I don't know if Director Callender Anderson or Attorney Birdingham have anything to add to that or correct, if I misstated it.
Hi, Assistant Attorney Audrey Birdingham. I believe...
I believe when it's self-reported, someone fills out a form online, counselor, that's called a bias incident report and we track that a little bit separately from hate crimes, where it's still, it's my understanding that hate crimes don't require a conviction, but I think hate crime data is tracked more by law enforcement. That's my understanding. And then we track bias incident reports, which are, which can be self-reported.
So no one needs to be charged for a hate crime in the first place and then go through the process and either convicted or not? If someone says, we think this is a hate crime, then that is considered part of the statistics that's collected?
I, to be honest, counselor, I'm not certain. I think that the hate crimes, again, I believe that that's what, that hate, to be a hate crime, that's tracked by law enforcement. So I think they have their own definition and I am not certain exactly what that is right now. I could look into that and let you know. But when we track it ourselves in terms of someone's self-reports online, we don't call it a hate crime, we call it a bias incident report.
Okay, thank you. And last question, if I may. What is the uses of that data that we collect? Why do we collect it?
So I know hate crime data is collected by many law enforcement agencies across the United States. We collect bias incident reports within our city. And I think it's largely just used by the, I mean, we make the information public. I don't know how other agencies use it. I know the Human Rights Commission sort of looks at it in terms of the work that they're doing and tries to, you know, compare, see how many people might be actually reaching out to the commission versus just filing an incident report and seeing if there's a disconnect and where those numbers lie. That's where, that's how I understand it's sort of looked at from the Human Rights Commission standpoint. I'm not sure how other agencies might use that information because we do make it public.
Okay, so bias acts and hate crimes are two different things? Or two different categories, I think?
For, sorry. For the purposes of our reporting within the city, yes, they're two different things.
Okay, thank you.
The, Councilmember Sims, if you look at the Hate Incidents Report, which is what it's actually called, out of the Human Rights Commission, the Bloomington Human Rights Commission so far, but again, this would carry over to the joint commission. If you look at those, effectively what they say is they take the reports from police departments, so from law enforcement, for example, things that would constitute crimes potentially. They take reports of incidents from individuals, from groups, et cetera. And what they do is they compile those data and then report on them. They don't really investigate them. What they do is they're reporting on those data. And I think that it informs as well the educational and public outreach efforts that go on with the Human Rights Director and that the commission participates in. And we would expect for that to continue as well. In other words, it's an indicator of what may be happening or people are perceiving is happening in the jurisdiction and what may need some additional attention by way of outreach and education, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on Ordinance 2309 as amended? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on Ordinance 2309 as amended. Is there, while we take a look here in chambers, if there's anyone who would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are any comments on the ordinance under consideration, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay, I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
I see no hands going up in Zoom.
In which case, let's come back to council. Any additional questions or final comments on Ordinance 2309 as amended? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2309 as amended?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that passes nine zero. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2308 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, all right. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that passes nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2308, to amend the Traffic Calming and Greenways Program Incorporated by Reference into Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amending the Traffic Calming and Greenways Program Incorporated by Reference into Bloomington Municipal Code, Section 1526020. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance adopts an amended traffic calming and greenways program. The traffic calming and greenways program sets the standard for the prioritization and placement of neighborhood traffic calming and related traffic control devices and requires a consistent procedure for resident-led and staff-led processes. The amendments to the program include the addition of common council action as a required step in both the resident-led and staff-led processes.
Thank you.
I move that Ordinance 2308 be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there, please, is there a presentation?
I believe that there will be a motion to postpone, and I prefer to make the presentation at that time. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the council postpone consideration of Ordinance 2308 till the May 10th regular session and that council staff be instructed to invite the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission to provide the council with a formal recommendation on the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to postpone consideration of 2308 to May 10th? Yes. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just to summarize the motivation for the motion and some context, we considered a previous numbered version of this ordinance late last year, as council members will recall, and tabled it until now. And prior to that, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission had briefly discussed, I think, at one of their meetings. It had been added to the agenda at the request of a commissioner, but they, I don't think had a formal presentation from the sponsor and didn't take a vote to offer a recommendation. And in the spirit of what Mr. MG was sharing earlier with valuing our resident-led boards and commissions and making sure they're a part of the process and giving guidance and advice to the council, I thought it was best to have them formally consider and make a recommendation with respect to the ordinance, yes or no, suggested changes, that sort of thing. I reached out to some commissioners in anticipation of this motion and several got back to me and supported that idea as well.
Thank you. Are there questions? Or, well, actually, no, the motion is debatable, right?
One more note, it is debatable, but yeah, the timing is good because the commission is meeting on May 8th, and I believe council staff confirmed with Hank Duncan, the staff liaison, that this could be, that they were amenable to adding this to the agenda for their Monday meeting. So that's why the motion to postpone is only for one week later. The commission should have time to consider it between now and then.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I just would like to say that I don't have any objection to the postponement for consideration by the Bike and Ped Safety Commission. I know that it was, it was presented by Assistant Planning Transportation Director Rosenbarger at a meeting in the fall. And I found out rather late about it. It was substituted for an item on the agenda, as I recall, and discussed. And I commented at that meeting in terms of my intention, but I have no problem with some further time, another week or so, for the Bike and Ped Safety Commission to consider whether they want to make a comment on. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Or debate? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty?
I appreciate that from Councilmember Rallo. And just to clarify, I guess I would suggest that as the sponsor, he make a presentation to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission and as part of the process. And that's it, thanks.
With that, just to correct, that was already done by?
Oh, you yourself gave a presentation or staff?
No, 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 staff did.
Okay, I meant you as the ordinance sponsor, is what I was suggesting, sorry.
Well, I was preempted from doing, by staff.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Additional debate on the motion to postpone? Yes, Councilmember Sims?
I guess I just would like a little clarification. Why, and we've been talking about this for a while. So why was it previous, it previously put on the agenda for the Bike and Ped Commission to consider in order to form a recommendation that we should have by now? I mean, part of this is so that it can now go to the Bike and Ped to get us a recommendation. We've been talking about this for a while, what's taken it so long to not be on the Bike and Ped agenda months ago? So that, you know, this is going to extend things, and I'm okay with it, the postponement, for obvious reasons. But we're talking about processes and all these things, so I just kind of want to know why wasn't it presented to the Bike and Ped Commission in order to give us a recommendation some time previous so that we could dispense this one way or another as it was scheduled tonight? Does anyone have an answer for that?
Anyone on council or any staff? There seems to be no answer forthcoming. Oh, Councilmember Flaherty?
I'll just briefly suggest that there's no formal policy or practice that I'm aware of on either the council side or city staff side of when something goes through a board of commission or not. I sort of mentioned this in an email to fellow council members, that some departments, like Planning and Transportation, for instance, tend to take almost all legislation through a board or commission or multiple boards or commissions on the way to the council to secure recommendations. Other departments have not been engaged in that practices actively. And I think it's a favorable practice. I think it's something we should work to better define and set expectations around. We've seen it with council members developing ordinance as well and taking it to commissions first before coming here. But, you know, to be fair to the ordinance's sponsor, while I would suggest that go at his initiative to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission, you know, it's not a formal requirement of any kind, just something I would like to see. So I hope that helps some. It could have gone to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission at any time, of course, in the last five or six months, but it did not, and I'm suggesting it does now.
Mr. Robinson's here.
Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for explaining kind of general policy. Most staff-driven, almost all our staff-driven ordinances that we bring before you, we typically bring to plan, commission, bike ped, commission, traffic commission, parking commission, depending on what the ordinance is. Because this was a ordinance drafted by a council member, that's something that we didn't do. We were notified of the scheduling of that ordinance, and so we were here prepared tonight to respond to that. So we could have probably scheduled that as a best practice in the future, but no, we typically don't do that because it was a sponsor-originated ordinance. If you recall, when we did the TRO overlay for the zoning ordinance, one of the things that I asked the council to do is pass a resolution to give me the ability to take your initiative to, before the plan commission. And I do that mostly because I want to understand where the majority of you stand, giving me direction to go forward. So in this instance, it might be unique for me to take a legislation proposal by a council member before a commission without necessarily having acknowledgement that they could or cannot attend, without knowing the kind of general direction of this body. So, you know, I think moving forward, we could certainly work that out in the future, but that's probably why it wasn't heard specifically at Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional, Councilmember Volin?
I was just going to say, I think that this discussion sort of underscores the importance of discussing yet another council process that, I mean, I do believe that our boards and commissions have been slightly underappreciated even by the council with respect to the handling of legislation. So, you know, I think it should be a matter, of course, that such legislation, that there was a clearly a commission that's devoted to that topic, should be consulted. But, I mean, that's a matter for the committee to consider later, but I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional debate on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to postpone Ordinance 23-08 to May 10th?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that passes nine zero. We will take up Ordinance 2308 again on May 10th. And that takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2310 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Will you please, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2310, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03 and 20.04. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in Chapter Three of the UDO related to chicken flocks and Chapter Four of the UDO related to maximum parking standards.
Thank you. And we will take that up next at our regular session on May 10th. 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 Okay, great. Thank you. That brings us to our second of two periods of public comment. If there is anyone in council chambers who would like to offer comment, if you would please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public who have not already spoken earlier that would like to comment now, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Let's begin here in chambers. If you would, please sign in and then please state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Paulie Terracone. I'm a student. I've lived in Bloomington for almost 10 years, and I'm a current commissioner on the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Commission. And as we consider the effects of Ordinance 23-08, which would require the action of council on each traffic calming and greenway project, no matter how small, is worth observing how this legislation has acted thus far. The predecessor of 23-08 was 22-35, which did not make it out of 2022 due to?
Hi. This is actually for items not on the agenda tonight. Did you want to save this comment until next week when we take up?
I had other points for whenever it is discussed, but I just hope to add some points regarding that tonight. Is that not?
We postponed it till next week, so would you like to offer comments then, or?
I will then as well.
Okay, is that the full content of your comments tonight? Is it on that, is it fully on that item?
Yes.
Okay. I would suggest offering comments then, when we take that item up. So, public comment is intended for items that are nowhere on the agenda. So, public comment is intended for items that are nowhere on the agenda this evening.
Okay.
So, sorry for that confusion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As a point of order, could I just suggest to the speaker that you can also email us with his comments?
Yes, thank you.
In anticipation of next week, which is a comment.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Yeah. So additional comment? Mr. Lucas, do we have any requests on Zoom?
I do have a comment from Sam Dove on Zoom, who asked me to share a message that reads as follows. What Greg Alexander said on Twitter is, "It is surreal watching Councilmember Susan Sandberg. She used her advanced comments to say that she thinks we built enough for bike and ped and needs to start working on cars again." Then her, then said her main priority is increasing the size of the police force. That's the end of the comment.
And any additional comments via Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
And I'm not seeing any here in chambers? Okay, that'll conclude our second period of public comment this evening and that takes us to matters of council schedule.
Just a reminder, that was already mentioned earlier tonight, that the council has a committee meeting tomorrow. The Committee on Council Processes is scheduled to meet at 5:30 PM in the McCloskey Room. That's it.
That's it, all right. Seeing no additional business for this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.